Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the February 12th, 2024 meeting of the Lafayette City Council. My name is Waitai Kwak. I'm the vice mayor standing in for our mayor, Gina Dawson, who unfortunately is not feeling well today, so she's out sick. But let's do item number two, our roll call. And I see present with me today here, Councilmember Susan Candell and Councilmember John McCormick. Councilmember Carl Andori is away on an excused absence today. Item number three, we don't need on the agenda, so let's go to item number four. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, so it's unanimous. The today's agenda is adopted. Item, we have no closed session this evening, so item five and number, item five and six, we will skip over. And so let's go to item seven, the pledge of allegiance. And I'd like to invite our newest council member, John McCormick, to do the honors. Thank you. Let's move to agenda item eight, our land acknowledgement statement, which I have the honor of reading tonight. "We acknowledge that Lafayette is part of the unceded ancestral homeland of the Bay Mewoc people. The Bay Mewoc and neighboring Aloney people have lived in and moved through this place for thousands of years. They stewarded and shaped this land for hundreds of generations. We express our appreciation and gratitude for this profound legacy, which enhances and contributes to our lives to this day. We will strive to honor this land and strengthen our ties with the indigenous communities that continue to live and work in our East Bay region as our neighbors and community members. We acknowledge and honor them and their ancestors, elders, and next seven generations." Thank you. Let's move to agenda item number nine. That's public comments for items not on the agenda. I'd like to ask City Clerk Robbins if there are any speakers in the room that would like to speak on items not agenda that have given you a yellow card. And anybody who would like to speak, please fill out a card in the back of the room and provide it to our city clerk.
Vice Mayor Kwak, I do have speaker slips tonight, so we will start for members of the public in the meeting room. And my first speaker is Jean Fulmer.
Very good.
To be followed by Lisa Dispro. Each speaker has three minutes to speak.
Is it on now? There we go. Okay. Hi, I'm Jean Fulmer. John, I'd like to welcome you to the city council. Congratulations on your appointment. I was one of the six or seven community members who enjoyed the fullness of the appointment meeting. And one of the things that you said during your application, during your interview, I really appreciated. And that was that you mentioned that Lafayette has not been getting NICSOL notices. And I think some of us have noted that again, once or twice in the last week. We had a situation with helicopters flying all over the place just a few days ago. And not too long before that, I had helicopters over my house. And of course, probably the most basic and primary function of any government is the safety of its citizens. And part of that is communication. So I would ask that, you know, we relook at NICSOL. I do get NICSOL notifications from Maraga and Arinda, but I don't get them from Lafayette. And where do I go? Just like most community members, when I'm looking for information, I look at News 24680. I look at all the comments in there because there are some citizens that actually listen to the police scanner themselves. And, you know, I look on Nextdoor. And I'd love to have it come right to my device since we have that technology available. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Lisa Dispro, followed by Kenny Brock.
Okay, is the timer gonna? Good. Good evening, I'm Lisa Dispro. It's been a while since I've presented in front of the Lafayette City Council. And I'm back here talking about the El Cartola overpass. And I, I printed out the previous statement from former mayor Candell regarding the overpass, which I think is substantive and we should be following. And I just want to remind you that each of you has taken an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. And I expect you to follow it. And with that, I want to read amend the First Amendment, which was ratified in 1791. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people peacefully to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." All of these actions happened and have happened on El Cartola, which is a publicly funded, which is publicly funded by the taxpayers, the people of California. It belongs to the people. The state is responsible to maintain it for the benefit of the people. The La Merinda article by Mr. Fancher on the 31st of January 24 was another one-sided, biased story. To be clear, there have been numerous anonymous false reports of activity on El Cartola that never happened. I know that for a fact because I was present at every one of our events from 2003 to 2023. So I've been on the overpass for 20 years. Every police investigation of people throwing things on cars was proven to be false. You can ask Chief Aldret for confirmation. Let's put that lie to bed. It needs not to be in print again. Regarding the graffiti, that was done by bad actors. Regarding the vehicles that blocked access, bad actors again. Regarding the flag launched onto the freeway, I'm really sorry, Mayor Candell, former Mayor Candell, but that was precipitated by an agreement between us that we would not protect our flags by removing ourselves from that side of the sidewalk. So a bad guy came up and unhinged a flag and launched it. Had we been at our standard place, that never would have happened. So I want to submit that actually, Mayor Candell, that was your nightmare. And I then want to read the ACLU statement regarding what if others react violently? It's not our fault. We acted peacefully in every circumstance.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Kenny, I think it's Branch, and I've mispronounced your name. Please let me know, followed by Carol.
Welcome. Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. Mike, I want to talk about freedom of assembly. Freedom of assembly is described as the, as the citizens of the USA having the right to say or express our dreams for the betterment of all Americans. Citizens gathering in public to express a vision, to create a better world, should not be condemned. Peaceful protests are not violent, but geared to gain justice for American rights. Governments around the world routinely imprison people for speaking out their opinions. While governments have a duty to prohibit hateful or inciteful speech, freedom of expression is not a threat. In fact, freedom of expression is protected by Article 19 of the United Nations Universal Declaration of Human Rights. Freedom of expression is closely linked to freedom association, the right to form and join clubs, societies, trade unions, or political parties. The American people have the right to participate in peaceful demonstrations or public meetings. Freedom of expression seems to belong to the wealthy, famous, and powerful people in government. Tell me why this group is not restricted to express views. As a group of concerned citizens made up of retirees, parents, grandparents, and the working class, we desire the same values. Most of our elders traveled through Ellis Island to live the American dream legally. I describe, I desire to respect their dreams by expressing a message in a positive and peaceful manner. I am here today not as a threat, but as an example of what makes America free. The right of all publicly, publicly, the right of all to publicly exercise their views without retaliation by the government, without retaliation, suppression, or restriction on public sidewalks. As Americans, we will not surrender our God-given freedom. As elected city council members, you took an oath to defend our Constitution from all enemies, foreign and domestic. We expect you to fulfill this oath or leave this position so that another council member will fulfill the oath of office. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Carol?
Thank you. My name is Carol Chukavich, and I, I'm here to address what I consider a bit of a overreach by the city of Lafayette in this area of the El Cartola Boulevard. And I say this because I've been following this. I am a resident, and I think it's really a wonderful thing that people can express diverse opinions over that overpass. In January 14th, that article that was written by then Susan Candell, the mayor at that time, was outstanding and very well, well documented as to the delineation of the city and the state and the CHP and so forth. So I was surprised to see a January 31st printing of another article this, just this year. How can this be again brought forward? This has already been well documented by the former mayor, who validates this, the article on the 31st validated the facts that have not changed. The state has jurisdiction over the El Cartola overpass, not the city council of Lafayette. The safety of motorists is not the responsibility of the city of Lafayette. It's already been established by the CHP. So what is the actual concern here for, for the safety of the people? Or is it about the, the monitoring of free speech? I, I agree with some of those that have spoken in, in advance of me. It seems that they're more concerned about the limiting of free speech than the celebration of it. In fact, in the article I read from this year in January, Councilmember Andori was quoted as saying, quote, "Nobody should be out there with flags, banners, marching, or protest", end of quote. That really concerns me because that is the overreach of, of a smaller entity trying to take and move itself into the larger entities of, of the state and the, and the CHP. It's more about, you know, when, when, when that came from the council member, that nobody should be out there with flags and banners, that concerns me. It's about the, the rights of all Americans to be out and, and, and under the, on the protection of the CHP and Caltrans. They know what they're doing. This is what, what they're there for and not the city of Lafayette to, to overrule the state authorities. I was really concerned about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for, for coming.
Vice Mayor Kwak, I have no additional speaker slips, and I see no hands raised in our virtual audience.
All right, thank you. While the public comment during, for items not on the agenda are not something that the city council will, can comment on now, the, I believe the city manager's update will have a little bit of an update on this matter of the El Cartola Bridge. So if you, I welcome the members of the public who have come tonight to stay a little bit longer to hear our city manager's update. And with that, we will go to item number 10 on the agenda, which is city manager Shrevatza.
Thank you. Good evening, city council and members of the public. This is my bi-weekly update to the city council on department activities. From the housing element front, today the city received the State Department of Housing and Community Development's letter, our third review letter on the housing element update. Staff is studying the six-page letter to determine the extent of revisions that are needed in our housing element. I have also sent an email to HCD, the State Department, requesting a face-to-face meeting with them because it's really imperative that we have this dialogue going so that we can get a successful certified housing element. For the benefit of the public, HCD's letter has been posted to our website, both on planlafayette.org and lovelafayette.org. From on the reservoir tower, if you recall, last year, the city expressed concerns about East Bay MUD's proposal to reduce the reservoir tower by height by 40 feet, leaving only a truncated remnant of the iconic structure. A committee of highly experienced and qualified Lafayette residents have studied East Bay MUD's plans and reports to determine if there was, if there's any way to retain the existing scale and design of the tower. The committee just a few days ago submitted its findings to East Bay MUD. And the conclusion that the committee came up, came with is that the tower can be safely and cost-effectively retrofitted by the addition of a modest amount of mild steel reinforcement in the approximately upper half of that tower. This would enable the tower to remain at the height that it is today. The committee has submitted its reports to East Bay MUD, and I will provide you with us updates as and when East Bay MUD gets back to us. I do want to touch upon the El Cartola Bridge. We have reached out to Caltrans to ask them about their, to confirm their jurisdiction as well as CHPs. And the mayor, the police chief, and I will be meeting with Caltrans the first week of March, and we will, I will provide you with the update the first meeting in March. Moving on to engineering, a reminder that the city staff will hold a Zoom meeting on Tuesday, the 13th, tomorrow at 7:00 PM to present the 2024 surface seal and paving projects. This is an opportunity for the public to learn about the, the CIP project, the streets that are impacted, and to also provide feedback to city staff. More details on the streets and the design can be found on the city's website under the engineering department. And finally, we lost Greg Travers, our maintenance supervisor. Happy retirement after 19 years of service, and we wish him well. I'd also like to inform you that Jesus Hernandez has been promoted from within as the park's maintenance supervisor. Jesus has been with, with the city since 2008 and is a Lafayette resident. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council members? Councilmember Candell?
So is the housing element going to be brought back to us at the next meeting? The element itself, or an update, or some sort of?
We can provide you with a, we could provide you with a timetable. We haven't determined the extent of revisions.
Exactly, right, yeah.
What we'd like to do is spend this week documenting the revisions and then meeting with HCD because we really at this time want to make sure that they address us face-to-face and answer the questions that we might have. Councilmember Candell, we'd be happy to bring back the element, but there won't be any changes recommended as a?
That I understand. Okay, yeah, thank you.
And if that's the desire of the council, please let, thank you.
Councilmember McCormick?
All right, thank you, Niroop. A question on the, the study that our experts did on the seismic, is that a, the report I know was sent to East Bay MUD, is that something that the public and the council is going to be able to see, or what's the, what's the plan on that?
It is, it is a public document. Yes, I'd be happy to find a, we don't have a house for it on our website, a place for it to land, but I'll make sure that we create something with links to previous reports so that you can all see it.
Thank you very much. All right, if there are no further questions, I'd like to open it up to public comment. Are there any, is there any public comment for agenda item 10, the city manager's update?
No speaker slips and no hands raised, Vice Mayor Kwak. Thank you. At this time, the?
Go ahead, city clerk.
Well, first of all, if you'd like to speak, you should come to the podium so everyone can hear you. And this can't be a back-and-forth conversation.
Understood. So there can be public comment on the city manager's report, and we welcome you to make a statement of up to three minutes.
I don't understand why you're pursuing the established fact of this El Cartola issue because the First Amendment is allowing people to do this. The state of California has got an obligation to the citizens of, of the county and of the state. And the city of Lafayette thinks that you can supersede that? I, I don't understand. I mean, it's established that these entities are in charge of this particular area, so I mean, really, you're going to go against the, the CHP and the, and the, and the state of California Transportation Authority and, and assert that all of the people of Lafayette are in agreement that this is a safety concern because that's not so. The people in the city of, many people that I've seen are, are. Many people that I've seen are happy to see diverse opinions represented on that overpass. And the city is taking it upon itself to confront the state and the CHP. What's going on? I don't understand that. Can you help me understand this?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No additional speakers, Vice Mayor Kwak.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any comments from? If not any further comments from city council members, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is Presentations. 11A is Kristin Connolly. This is. Perhaps, yeah.
Public comment is a time for the public to make comment. It's not a back-and-forth between the council and the speaker. The city manager gave a brief report and you heard brief questions from the council and members of the public can give statements up to three minutes based off of the city manager's report, but it is not a back-and-forth between the public and the council and staff.
And maybe for clarification, it's not on our agenda. We're not allowed to legally talk about it. So we can only discuss it and have back-and-forth when it's on our agenda, which I believe might be the next meeting. I don't know. It will be on an upcoming agenda and then that's when we can have the back-and-forth. So we are legally bound.
Thank you, everybody, for the clarifications. Let's go with welcoming Kristin Connolly, our Contra Costa County Clerk Recorder and Registrar, give a presentation on the March primary election.
Great, thank you so much for having me. I am in the process of reaching out to and speaking with all 19 city and town councils, but this is the only one in which I get to say, good evening. Thank you for having me in my city council meeting as a resident of Lafayette since August of 2010. So thank you so much for the opportunity. I know that your agendas are tightly packed. So and some of you have seen bits and pieces of this before, but in my first year in office, there was one message that I got over and over again from my counterparts around the state. And that was that the March 2024 presidential primary in California would be the most complex in the history of the state because it's the first time that we are mailing a ballot to all registered voters in a partisan presidential primary. And so I decided to have a much more significant outreach effort to try and list the help of elected city council members across Contra Costa. We're a very large county, ninth largest in California. And so I'm here with a couple of asks and hopefully with some helpful information to the public. So hopefully, okay. In every presentation, I think it's important to talk about the primary statutory responsibilities of the Clerk Recorder Elections Department. So as you see on the side in the slide, we're responsible for conducting elections in a fair, efficient, accurate, and timely manner. We provide all of our services to maintain accurate and a high level of voter registration and to ensure that all eligible citizens can register to vote and are able to exercise the right to vote according to all federal and state laws and regulations. And we also, you know, every single person in our office swears an oath to defend both the state constitution and the U.S. Constitution. And we also have a code of conduct for the elections office that requires all of us to be bound to act in a nonpartisan way that reflects well on our office and does what we can to instill the trust of all voters in Contra Costa. We also have actually a larger portion of our staff works in the clerk recorder functions. We like to say that we cover very important parts of your life. I was born in Walnut Creek at Kaiser, so I can get my own birth certificate in our office, but we issue birth certificates, marriage licenses, we perform weddings. And so I'm happy to answer questions about that, too. We maintain the public record in terms of property transactions. We are an award-winning office. There's a our office is full of very experienced staff people on this slide. You'll see Deputy Clerk Recorder Tommy Gong running through a human tunnel. So is it our first convening of the Center for Elections Excellence? We're one of just two jurisdictions in California. Us and Shasta County were awarded this distinction by a national nonprofit in recognition for our innovation and our excellence, partly in our leadership of an 11-county Bay Area coalition that seeks to just really let voters know what the facts are in terms of how to vote. We're really trying to fight mistus and malinformation in our shared media market. And we're also working on some shared collateral, which I have on this slide. In early 2023, we had a meeting of our coalition of this 11-county group and we wanted to identify what we thought would be most helpful for voters to know. So we wanted to answer the question, how do I know my vote was counted? And why does it take so long to count the votes? So I'm happy to share these documents if you can share them out with folks. We're trying to get these out as far and as wide. So just a little snapshot about the county itself. And again, the number of registered voters changes all the time. There has been an uptick in terms of voter registration. Between the time I, you know, we're actually closer to 709,000 registered voters. But I wanted to convey to all of you so that you and members of the public understand that ever since we started mailing ballots to every registered voter with the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, which was initially a temporary change, but then was codified by the legislature, between 90 and 95% of all of the vote in Contra Costa County comes in in what's considered vote by mail. About half of that comes in through our secure drop boxes. We have 40 of those around the county. And about half comes in through the United States Postal Service. So also important, we moved to a central count model in 2022, which means that polling place voters no longer place their ballots into a tally machine of any kind. All of those ballots are securely put. And in fact, this year, we have brand-new bags that are green. So if any of you are polling place voters, you will be putting your ballots into the green bags that are at every all 147 of our polling places. So but that allows us to use our tally machines that are fastest back at our office. Again, because that's just 5% to 10% of the total vote overall will come in on Election Day. We are authorized for just 32 full-time employees in our county of this size. I like to point out and try not to, you know, throw shade at quite the contracts. The county of Santa Clara does great work. They only have 400,000 or registered voters, but their staff is nearly three times the size. So we are known for being an innovative, leanly-staffed office. And I'm very proud of the work that our office performs. And again, this will be the first election in the history of California where we will mail every voter, where we have mailed every voter a partisan, a ballot in a partisan presidential primary. So then just for you, for your residents, your constituents here in the city of Lafayette, we have 14 precincts serving the just under 20,000 registered voters. On this slide, I'm not going to read the partisan breakdown, but you'll notice that I highlighted the no-party preference voters. And perhaps the most important message I come to you is to ask your help in making sure that all no-party preference voters understand their options for expressing a preference for president, for presidential candidates of different parties. As members of a no, because they are not members of a political party, there is an additional step that no-party preference voters have to take. And that's what I wanted to get into a little bit of detail here today, which I will in a minute. We have 25 volunteers from the city of Lafayette that have committed to help us out. We're glad for that. And then if you were curious, the biggest turnout in the November 22 election for an in-person voting happened at the Veterans Hall, Veterans Memorial Building with 349 voters on Election Day. So here's what no-party preference voters need to know is that we sent them a postcard in mid-December to about 158,000 no-party preference voters countywide. It's about 20% of the county. Lafayette is typical of the percentage of no-party preference voters. We asked and explained, we asked of and explained to voters how they could vote for president. There's three political parties in California. And again, the political parties themselves set these rules. It's our job as elections administrators to make them happen. So voters in the American Independent, the Libertarian, and the Democratic who wish to vote in those parties, and the Democratic, American Independent, or Libertarian parties, no-party preference voters can request what's called a crossover ballot. It means they will remain a no-party preference voter. They are not changing their registration, but they can request a ballot. And if you're interested, that ballot is different than the party ballots because it will only have the presidential candidates on it. It will not have the party committee candidates. So that's one set of rules. So we only heard back from just under 8,000 of those voters from sending them this postcard in December. So when they looked in their mailbox on February 6th and February 7th, so last week after our ballots went out on February 5th, those folks that didn't get in touch with our office or send us this postcard received a ballot that did not have presidential candidates on it. But because of a new law passed last year, it contains instructions about how to express a preference for president by contacting our office and getting a new ballot issued. So I just wanted to highlight, it's not too late if you didn't get back to us. So but there's a different set of rules. If you're interested in voting for the Republican Party, the Green Party, or the Peace and Freedom Party, those parties require that California residents re-register for those parties if they would like to participate in that, in those presidential primaries. And so the deadline to do so is online is February 20th. However, and that's normally it would be February 19th, but that's a holiday. And so the way the California Election Code works is that it's actually the next day, February 20th. So I've included the Voter Services email address. I've also included our fax number to the extent anyone still does that. But you can also call our office at 335-7800. I cared so much about this, I recorded a podcast about this a couple of months ago. It came out in early December. This is a rare photo of me looking somewhat tall. My friend Evelyn was very kind in how we did this, but we really wanted to get the word out. And so it was great to collaborate with Santa Clara and get the word out about this. So I'm really, it's a, it is complex that there are different rules for different parties, but under California Election Code, that's how it works. So I wanted to highlight again that we have in-person voting available. And actually, you don't have to wait till March 1st. If you're willing to drive to Martinez, I have it on good authority. It takes 21 minutes from Burton Valley to drive to our office because I do it every day. And so our office has been open since February 5th for in-person voting that you can do in our lobby and our staff is happy to help you with that. But we remain a polling place county. We have not moved to a Voters' Choice Act like Alameda County has or Santa Clara has. So in-person voting, there's one location in all five supervisory districts. The closest early in-person voting is at Walnut Creek City Hall. And you'll note on the slide that that begins on Friday, March 1st. It happens on March 2nd and will also be available on Monday, March 4th. So those are five regional early voting sites in addition to 555 Escobar, which is the address of my office. And I did, we are letting people know where their secure drop boxes are. This is on a map in the Voter Information Guide and it's listed here on the side for everyone to know, just the address on School Street, which is in front of Stanley, correct? Am I right? So, okay, that's what I thought. So there are tweaks occasionally to where the secure drop boxes are located. So this is just a timeline. As I sit before you today, we are at E minus 22, which means we are 22 days before Election Day. California Election Code is written and all election code is written based on the number of days before an election. And so we've already passed a couple of these important milestones. Voter information guides were mailed, ballots have been mailed. And again, I noted the date, the actual date is February 20th, even though it's listed as February 19th on this slide because this didn't take into account the holiday. Again, the early voting sites open at E minus four, Election Day itself, March 5th. And then I just wanted to note here, our office will count ballots received if they are postmarked by Election Day. To be postmarked by March 5th, but one reason it takes so long to count the ballots in California is that all elections officials have to accept ballots up to seven days after an election. So until E plus seven. I would like to note, one important part of this effort is that we test all of our voting equipment. It's called logic and accuracy testing. And we have a public forum of that, that anyone is allowed to come and observe. That happened on Friday in our office. And I, you know, can confirm that the testing went the way, you know, we work the machines, we make sure that they go the way that they should. And so it's an opportunity for the public to see our voting systems in action. And I just want to make the point that we have a Certified Election Observer Program, which we run with every major election. That started in the primary in 2022 and is something really important to me when I took office, that we continue to do that because it's important that people have behind-the-scenes access to understand every part of our process. So I know that in 2022, it was only myself, some volunteers from Legal Women Voters, and one of my opponents to running for clerk that went and saw logic and accuracy testing. It's a small group of folks, but it's really important. And I was pleased that we had about a dozen folks on Friday for that. So my message is how can you be supportive? So I'd like you to communicate with your residents and reinforce important election information, particularly around the no-party preference message about how you can vote in a crossover way to the Democratic Party, the American Independent Party, or the Libertarian Party, and how you can re-register for the Republican Party, the Peace and Freedom Party, or the Green Party. Even if you're a no-party preference voter and you do nothing until March 5th, you can go to a polling place and our poll workers can help you. That means you can even re-register on a provisional basis. And I know I mentioned the green bags before, but when you vote provisionally, we have a purple trolley that that goes into. We've redesigned all of our envelopes to try to be clearer and more, you know, brand it more clearly as official county mail with some purple hues. So I've had some people, Warriors fans that are grumpy that we're sort of skewing toward the Lakers with our provisional voting. But I assure you that even on Election Day, that our poll workers will be trained in order to check you in and accommodate if you're a no-party preference voter. That's also true if you come to our office for in-person voting or if you go to any other regional early voting sites. Can you tell? I really, really want the no-party preference voters to be taken care of. Another thing that you can do is encourage high school students to become student poll workers. I noticed that the Youth Commission is speaking immediately following me. Please consider this an offer that anyone on the election staff, if you're interested in speaking. For example, our Elections Services Supervisor, responsible for training poll workers, recently spoke to the Pittsburgh Youth Commission and was very well-received. So we would love to offer ourselves as a resource about all election-related issues. I would love for you to consider yourself an ambassador for registering new voters year-round. We have obviously a very high degree of registration in Lafayette and I want to keep it that way. I'd also like to have you reinforce safety messages with your local police departments. I've worked collaboratively with Sheriff Livingston since assuming office. It's a best practice for there to be sort of year-round healthy communication between elections officials and law enforcement. There's a lot of things about the election code that law enforcement doesn't normally interact with and it's important that they have the information they need to be successful. And we have secure drop boxes and 147 polling places in every corner of Contra Costa. And so I've been very pleased with Sheriff Livingston's support and recognition. He even allowed us to host a tabletop exercise with a national nonprofit that brings law enforcement officials and elections officials together to do some preparation. So we were able to use the Sheriff's Emergency Operations Center for our election staff to go and work through some different scenarios. And the law enforcement response was really positive. We had enough law enforcement attend the tabletops that there was at least one law enforcement representative at every table. It really taught our election staff a lot. And so just really wanted to give kudos for that collaboration. There are two times a year where the Secretary of State declares California High School Voter Education Weeks in the last two weeks of April and in September. And so our staff fans out dozens of high schools around the county. And we'd welcome your participation if you wanted to go to Akalani's with the election staff as the local representatives of our city council. Be happy to work with you if you're interested in doing that. Secretary of State Dr. Shirley Weber has mentioned that she intends to be echoing and putting out promoting the civil rights connection to voting and what people have gone through in order to get the right to vote in hopes of inspiring more Californians to vote. So she's recognizing the 60th anniversary of Fannie Lou Hamer's "I'm so sick and tired of being sick and tired" speech as a civil rights activist. And so they're, you know, if the Secretary of State starts putting out those messages, our office plans to echo those things. And so you'll see that in our social media platforms. So but I wanted you to notice our website, contracostavote.gov. It's important that we went to a .gov domain in order to increase cybersecurity and again, really be clear to residents that we are providing information about how to cast votes. So we are focused on increasing youth engagement. And I will talk about that in a minute. But these QR codes are live if you would like to follow us on Instagram or on TikTok. Dawn Krueger leads the outreach effort for my team and she was able to stand up two TikTok committees in my office, one for each division. And we are very committed, which happens very, in a very dedicated, there's no way for there to be any interference with TikTok with anything that we do. We have a dedicated phone that only operates. It's no way happy to answer questions about that. But one reason we think that's important is that we're frustrated about the decline in youth engagement. And so these are California statistics, but in lots of ways, California is a microcosm of California. And so one reason we're focused on youth turnout is that you saw a real positive jump in terms of. in terms of percentage of youth turnout between 24 and 2018, 2014 and 2018, excuse me. But then it, you know, did not continue to climb beyond 2022. And yes, these are midterm elections, not presidential elections. I hope that the 18 to 24 block turns out in droves, and I'm working hard to do that. But I did just want to talk about why we're trying to diversify the the platforms and the ways that we're getting our our message out. So and then this is just the five-part plan. I'm not going to review all this, but this is what the Committee for Safe and Secure Elections puts out. I just wanted to convey to you as the chief elections official of the county, I take this very seriously, the safety, the cyber safety, the physical safety, and the the integrity of our elections. And I'm just really grateful for the collaboration with Sheriff Livingston and our law enforcement partners. And this is just the first page, two pages of that. There's an update that CSE puts out every year. And so this was the most recent for changes made in 2023 and incorporating key items. So it was actually a six-page document that I I shared with law enforcement in preparation for a successful and safe election. So I'm happy to answer any kinds of questions about anything election-related, and just want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight.
Thank you so much, Ms. Connolly. I really appreciate that you are going to every single city, all 18 cities and jurisdictions in Contra Costa, and this is a complicated message to deliver, but it's really very clearly and well done. And so thank you for all the QR codes, the podcasts and so on. It's really helpful, and I'm sure our our communications staff would be happy to help amplify the message.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Let me see whether my fellow council members have any questions. Councilmember Candell.
I too very much appreciate the presentation, really well done.
Thank you.
Very well done. I have a friend who has kids my age and got in the dilemma where she got information and packets and ballots for her kids who've moved out of state. And so how do you un-register? Or how do you let you guys know we're not around?
925-335-7800. You can call our office.
Oh, just call the office?
You can call the office, and they can they can point you in the right direction in terms of re-registering. So unfortunately, California is not yet one of the states that's connected nationally, and we count on our citizen to 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 an electronic registration system that kind of helps when people move out of state. It kind of helps keep track of that. I mean, there are certain things we definitely check against, Social Security references and all that kind of stuff. But the the very best way is for people to let us know. So I am grateful for the question because a lot of people don't think about letting the department that they're leaving know
Right.
that they in fact are moving on and registered somewhere else. So yeah, no, I very much appreciate that question. And so and and it is, it is absolutely legal to stay registered at your permanent address. And then if you move out of state for college or for any other reason, you can continue to vote in California, and you can update us with your mailing address. So but the deal is, you can only be registered one place, and you can only vote in one place. So so you just have to make that choice. But we're happy to to help help folks out. And you should know, there is a very colorful exchange of envelopes that happens between counties. So what happens is if if the postal service delivers a ballot to the wrong county in the vote-by-mail system, there's a big swap, and we always make sure those get counted. So to the extent that people put a Contra Costa envelope in either a secure drop, like in a secure drop box in LA County, that will find its way back to us. I mentioned that as as my freshman in college is still registered in Contra Costa, but living in Los Angeles. Yeah.
Very interesting. Thank you. You have any other questions? All right.
Just I have to echo Councilmember Candell's appreciation for what you're doing. The enthusiasm you're bringing to this this topic is infectious, and I'm very excited about what's coming up now. And I just have to echo, I think just going after the youth vote, probably both of the high schools as well, as you can imagine, DVC, St. Mary's, and so on, getting that consistency used to voting every time, you know, it's not optional. I think it's terrific, and I'm happy you are leading the charge.
Well, thank you. There's some, there's research that shows if you can get a person to vote three times in a row, they're more likely to be a lifelong voter. And so I would love to figure out how we can, you know, really get our young people. It's part of, we pre-register 16 and 17-year-olds, which is allowed under California law, when we're out at the high schools during California High School Voter Education Week. A certain 17-year-old whose birthday I happen to know, when I went to his high school, was not yet pre-registered. And so I had to take care of that for my own son. But but it is so important to expand, and I am so honored to be doing this important work and really appreciate the expertise in our office and how we work really collaboratively statewide through a statewide association, and how we're able to work with with folks all across the country as part of that Center for Elections Excellence cohort. We were able to get a tour from the Kane County Clerk, who's been in office for nearly 30 years. His office is an homage to Dwight Oz Eisenhower. He is a very proud Republican county clerk, and he is doing top-notch things. And although it, you know, things look a little different because Illinois law is not exactly the same as California law, but we're all doing the same things to make sure that our voters have the information they need to make sure that the votes are the votes are counted in a timely, efficient, nonpartisan fashion.
Thank you. Thank you. If there are no other questions from council members, I would open it up to public comment. If you have any public comments on this item, please feel free to fill out a yellow slip and provide it to our clerk. Do we have any public comments?
I'm assuming Jean Fulmer is commenting on 11A, right?
Yes.
Hey, Jean Fulmer, Kristen, thank you for your presentation. It was great. I was one of the 12 or so that was able to go on the tour at the elections office on Friday, and it was great. I really learned a lot. I learned a lot of things I certainly didn't know. I I didn't know DHS and FBI were involved in helping in our our elections. That was interesting. I saw the logic and accuracy test. We went to the warehouse. We got to watch adjudication, which was, you know, really an interesting process. And also, they have screens that they've put up where citizens can come in and watch signature verification. So I really appreciate the efforts for transparency. I think, you know, the more transparent any government body can be, the better, and the more buy-in you get from your citizens. So, you know, I think it's great. They have a schedule on their website that that shows, you know, what the calendar is for, you know, testing, whatever it is you want to see, and all you have to do is just find out what time it is. Or you can basically show up at the elections office if you want to go view adjudication, signature. And and they have, you know, there's a corridor with glass on both sides, so you really, you can get pretty close. I was impressed, so I wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and for going.
Thank you so much, Jean. I didn't want to mention my name in case you weren't able to stay in the audience, but thank you, thank you for making the time to go do that. It's a really, it's a great thing when people will make the time to come learn about what we do.
All right.
I have another speaker.
Okay.
Bart Carr.
Good evening. This is actually very timely because I have a question for you. I don't, hopefully you can answer it. And actually, this is prompted by Councilmember Candell's question to you. I have a daughter that is living abroad, and we get the voter packet for her. She's registered here, and I think she would like to vote, but she's not in the country. So is that, how is, how can that be handled?
It's a great question. So if she got a normal ballot, like the same day that you got your ballot, is that what happened in the voter information guide?
Yes.
Okay, so that means our office doesn't know she's living overseas because permanent, so military, active military, regardless of where they're deployed, but if they're registered to vote in our office, as well as Contra Costa residents who are living abroad. There is a special set of rules for them, and it's a, it's an acronym. I'm going to say, I've spent my first year in office telling everybody to stop using acronyms. So UACAVA is the word for that, and 40 days before the election. So those folks get their information for us ahead of the 29 days where we send it out to everybody else. My message to you is, I, it's, so what we do is, there's an opportunity for people to actually participate with our remote access system, meaning that they could actually use some technology to get the ballot back to us, but you just need to let our office know where she's living. So I don't know if it's too late to do that for this election. I mean, I would hate for you to have to go to the expense of sending it to her and whatnot, right? Because with those physical ballots, we need her physical signature on the envelope to make it count. But but moving forward, you could certainly let us know what her updated address is, and then she would be treated like a, you know, a military overseas voter. I had a friend from high school that toured our office who's lived in Australia for a number of years, and I felt, I was just like, by the way, this is a real-life UACAVA voter living in Sydney, Australia, right? Because it's somewhat abstract to most folks. We don't get to get to meet the people that live abroad. But there is a separate set of rules, and if you give us her mailing address, we can put her into that bucket, which has a special treatment. And it actually goes back a little more than 20 years through the Help America Vote Act that was passed, right? Which is Congress's response to the Bush v. Gore Supreme Court case, and to sort of set a floor where everybody is is sort of uniformly behaving the same across the states. And so that is a bucket of voters that are treated the same way. And I would love to be more helpful to your daughter.
No, you have been very helpful, and if I call the number that you showed, then somebody can help me with that.
Exactly. Go walk you through it.
All right, great.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other public comments?
Vice Mayor Quoc, I have no additional speaker slips for members in the hall, but David Clark, I believe, is in our virtual audience.
All right, please have Mr. Clark join us by Zoom.
David, you're live. David, can you hear us? We can't hear you. You'll have to unmute yourself. Well, we're not having any luck with Mr. Clark.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're going to have to move on then, but thank you so much, Ms. Connolly, for the detailed presentation. Clearly, a lot of members of the public really appreciate all the details. So good luck on this important election coming up.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye. With that, let's go to Agenda Item 11B, which is a report from our Youth Commission. We're going to hear an update on goals and accomplishments.
Good evening, city council staff and members of the public. My name is Justin Bodley. I'm the Recreation Coordinator for the Parks Trails Recreation Department, as well as the staff liaison for the Youth Commission. I have my commission here tonight. I have both of my chairs and my treasurer, and they'll be giving you an update on this past year. So I'll let them introduce themselves and go ahead and present.
Hello, I would like to start off.
Okay, just going to speak real loud so we can hear.
Hello, thank you so much for having us. My name is Addison Stevens, and this is Miele Shu, and we are co-chairs. And then over here, I have Audrey Perkins, who is our treasurer. We are the Lafayette Youth Commission. We represent, we represent the youth of Lafayette for members of the public who do not know. And this is our, what we have accomplished over the 2023 year. So starting off the year pretty strongly, we had a family dance on March 17th that was St. Patrick's Day themed. We were able to bring together people of all ages to appreciate dance. We had a DJ, food, drink, and some fun activities, and it was an overall pretty successful event. Following that, we had our annual bunny brunch on April 8th. It had a few modifications and featured a continental-style brunch, but overall went really smoothly and brought together a lot of people and families for the holiday.
So in April, the Youth Commission was invited to participate in the Earth Day Festival, which was hosted by Sustainable Lafayette, and we organized a booth to spread education about the biodiversity in California. So we helped kids plant native wildflower seeds and sent them home to try and grow them.
In June, we also participated in the Second Annual Lafayette Community Day, and that was really great. We had, we had a Lafayette Rocks rock painting booth, and so it was enjoyed by people of all ages who came and visited the booth, and they took those rocks home to put in their gardens or in other places in the community. And the Haunted House in October, this is our biggest event of the year. It attracted a lot of people this year, and for the first time, we had an outdoor event because of construction that was happening in the community center area. And so it was a haunted bayou theme, and it had the highest number of participants that I think we've ever seen before. And we escaped the rain luckily, and it was really, really memorable. It was really great.
Then in December, we partnered with Advantage College Planning in order to educate those interested in the college applications process and how to prepare for college, and some tips and tricks. So that was really wonderful, and we got to learn some really interesting things.
And then we ended off the year sponsoring a donation drive, Toys for Tots. So we encourage people to donate new and used toys to be donated to less fortunate children as presents for the holiday season.
And that was all that we did during 2023. Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here, and cheers for a great 2024.
Thank you so much for your report, Youth Commission. Do we have questions from the council?
No questions, but that was a lot. You guys did a tremendous amount of work. It's just delightful. Are you going to hopefully do about the same this next year?
Yes, we are planning on it right now. Just this past Friday, we hosted a Valentine's-themed dance. It was a sweetheart dance themed after Conversation Hurts, and it was really successful. We had a pretty much full house, DJ booth, and face painting and all that, and it went really well. And we are also participating in the Earth Day again and a few other community events in the future.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Well, we have more questions. Don't leave yet.
Don't don't leave just yet. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. This is very exciting. I'm actually going to be, along with Vice Mayor Quoc, I'm going to be your council representative of the Youth Commission. Very excited. You guys are just doing amazing work. I am curious how many people overall are in the commission. How many people attend your meetings?
Yes, currently, we have, well, we currently have 14 on council and then one awaiting approval for at the next city council meeting. And when that happens, we'll have a full commission. We have a number of associates as well who come in and share their ideas. But yeah, full council.
And I'm just kind of curious, what are the age ranges? Is it high school, middle school?
Yes, so we usually have middle school and high schoolers. I think our youngest is in sixth grade right now, and we have a number of seniors on the council as well. All of us here are sophomores in high school. But yeah.
Very exciting. That bodes well for the for the leadership for the next couple of years then. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I'll just comment that I have the pleasure of being one of the council liaisons to the Youth Commission over the past few years, and it's really been, I'm so happy to see that Addison and Miele are your chairs this year. They bring a lot of energy and leadership and enthusiasm to really rally the troops here to get other students involved and to do a lot of the coordination for what we saw was many, many events, and some of those really have hundreds of people showing up. So you're doing a great job mobilizing our our youth to get involved with the city. And I'm looking forward to everything that you got going this coming year. And I do want to acknowledge Justin Bodley, who is your staff liaison, who is also very energetic and very organized. So I love coming to your meetings, but unfortunately, they fall on the same day as city council meetings, so we can't get there very often. But we do, I want to make sure you, the door is wide open for us to be involved and get to your activities and so forth. So keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Quoc, I have a public speaker.
Very good. Well, let's take public comment for the Youth Commission.
Oh, she looks like there is again. Okay. Lauren Herbeck.
All right, Lauren, welcome.
Hello, city council. Thanks, Joanne. Sorry, I was, I debated whether or not to stay on. Sorry for the cold voice, but I just wanted to congratulate the Youth Commission. I just wanted to say, as a family that has participated in the Haunted House every year, I loved, absolutely loved this past year's haunted trail. If you can continue doing that in the future, like what an amazing way of truly celebrating one of our amazing features in Lafayette. It truly was awesome, and we as a family really loved it. So whoever came up with the idea of using the nature trail, kudos to them. Great job. Keep it up.
Thank you so much, Ms. Herbeck, and thank you again. We're glad to hear the comments. Are there any other hands raised from the public?
No additional speakers at this time, Vice Mayor Quoc.
Okay, then we'll close this agenda item, and thank you so much for being with us tonight and for your service. Item 11C is a report from the Transportation and Circulation Commission with an update on their goals and accomplishments. Hit the microphone and bring it closer to you. Hit the microphone and bring it closer to you.
Good evening. Does that work?
Go as close as you can.
Does that work?
Better.
There we go. My name is Bart Carr. I am the chair, new chair of the Transportation and Circulation Commission, and I'll be giving the presentation tonight. And I'm accompanied here by most of the commission, which consists of Carl DiGiorgio, who is the vice chair, Greg Brown, Yanni Sierra, who's not here, Stella Witherspoon, and Lynn Hayden, who unfortunately was not here, not able to make it. One interesting thing I found out about Lynn Hayden, actually this past weekend, was that she was a founding member of the Transportation Commission back in the 1970s. And she has been part of the commission, providing service to this community for over 50 years. And so I think that's really, really amazing and deserves to be called out. And we're also supported by Patrick Goliere, who is the Transportation Program Manager, and he's sitting with us right here. So what I plan to do is go over, first of all, our accomplishments from 2023, and then go into our work plan for 2024. So with that, if we can go to the next... Thank you. So going first through our accomplishments, probably our biggest accomplishment in the year was the Local Road Safety Plan, LRSP, which is really the centerpiece action supporting our Vision Zero approach to traffic safety. It was put together by a task force of, I believe, 18 residents, who did a great job. Greg Brown was part of that effort and put together a great plan that is now available in use, and residents can actually take a look at it at the city website. We also updated our traffic calming program, along with the guidebook that residents can refer to online. This, it was updated to make it more efficient and streamlined in use. And it offers residents features that can be incorporated on their local roadways in cases where speed is a concern. Local roadway speed reduction, that was part of the Engineering and Traffic Survey that was conducted last year. This allowed us to reduce speed by five miles per hour on a select few roads, high-volume roads here in Lafayette, I think four or five roadways where speeds were lowered. We oversaw, continue to oversee the school roadway safety improvements for all schools here in Lafayette, including many private schools. This was a continuation of an effort that started in 2021, to see these improvements put in place to make the roadways safer, especially for pedestrians, for kids, and parents making their way to local schools. Burton Valley Traffic Calming, I think you're all familiar with that. That was a year-long effort to produce traffic calming features in and around Burton Valley School. We got quite an energetic response from the neighbors in Burton Valley, but we were able to put together a final result, which included a number of speed humps, lane stripings, improved signage, different features to take care of, make things safer in Burton Valley. We also updated the transportation action request process or program. We received recommendations from staff for projects that could be, would be good projects for grant applications for both primarily state, maybe some federal funds too. And so we were able to take a look at that list of suggestions and make some recommendations to those. Those were forwarded to you, and I think that you saw those back in your recent meeting in January, and were able to approve those to go forward. So now staff has that list, and when grant opportunities come about, then they can respond to those, and ideally, we'll be able to get grant funding for those projects. The commission also provided support in the person of Stella Witherspoon. She was part of the General Plan Advisory Committee and was part of that effort, which I knew took quite a bit of her time. And then finally, in 2023, in May of 2023, we had our Bike to Work Day Energizer Station in Plaza Park, and that was very successful. We had a number of bicyclists, both local cyclists and those cyclists passing through to stop for refreshments and talk about, you know, bike commuting and how fun it is. And we encourage, certainly encourage them to continue and hope that more people will do that. So those are some of the past things we were able to do in 2023. And with that, I'll go on to what we plan to do in 2024, once we can get things set up here. So I'm quickly just... Here we go. I'm just, you've seen this matrix representing the plan in your staff report. By the way, the staff report and the attached matrix is available for anybody to see. They can, there's a link to it from the city's website. But I'm just showing this to you. There's a lot there, as you can see. You can go to the second page. And I'm not going to go into this matrix. It's pretty complicated. And I'm just, what I'm gonna do is just go through a high flyover of some of the more important things, priorities that we plan to address in 2024, starting with Connecting Lafayette Project. This is a project that focuses on the area around Stanley Middle School and Lafayette Elementary. And what we want to do is improve the connections for pedestrians, youth pedestrians, their parents, their families, cyclists in that area, connections between the Lafayette Moraga Trail, the schools themselves, the downtown area. So it's easier for the students, the families, anybody to get around in that area if they choose to walk or bike, and do it safely, obviously. And that project will also include an expanded drop-off in St. Mary's Road for those parents that want to drop their kids off in that location. The Pleasant Hill Center median pathway project, I know you're familiar with. We're gonna be taking a look at the 60% design plan sometime this spring. We'll take a look at that. We'll make comment on it, and then that will come to you. So we will, you'll see that with our comments on that. The Olympic Roundabout Improvement Project, we were able, at our last meeting, actually, to take a look at the features that were installed temporarily at the roundabout that will now be made permanent. And we were able to provide some comment on that. So you'll see those comments. And I believe the Zoom meeting that was mentioned earlier on the Surface Seal Project on Pleasant Hill Road will also cover the improvements to be made permanent, the roundabout, and that's tomorrow. Is that, am I correct on that? Is the roundabout not part of that? Oh, I'm corrected then. Okay. Anyway, you'll see that coming from us. A pedestrian pathway from Spring Hill School. This is a pathway that currently exists as a dirt pathway from Spring Hill, the intersection of Spring Hill and Pleasant Hill Road, leading to the Lafayette Ridge Line parking space, where many parents park to take their children to Spring Hill School. That will be made permanent. And we got TDA funding in order to do that. And so we'll be, staff and our commission will be overseeing that effort to install that new permanent walkway. And then also, we'll be working on some big projects in Lafayette, the Downtown Parking Management Planning Study, the update to the General Plan Circulation Element, and then the Mount Diablo Boulevard Corridor Plan. We'll be working on those items this year also. In addition to the speed reductions that I mentioned earlier, we're gonna be taking a very close look at speeds adjacent to local schools, to see if those speeds need to be addressed in some way. And then finally, on an as-needed basis and also as funds allow, we'll be taking, working, or looking at the continued expansion of the East Bay Mud Aqueduct Pathway, which now extends in a very small length on the western side of the city. But we'd like to see it expand, and so that will be something we'll be taking a look at if the funds become available, probably through obtaining a grant for that. And then we'll also participate in the CCTA-sponsored Olympic Boulevard Corridor Plan. And I'm not sure if that's been scheduled or not, but they're looking for grant funding. So if those grant funds come through, then that's something that we would be participating in with other jurisdictions, probably Walnut Creek. So with that, that concludes my comments on what we accomplished in 2023 and what we plan to do in 2024. If there's anything else that needs to be added by my fellow commissioners or by staff, I guess now would be the time to do it. If not, that concludes my comments.
Okay, any other comments from your fellow commissioners? Go ahead, please do.
I'm Carl DiGiorgio. I wanted to just say welcome to Mr. McCormick. And, you know, we're at your service. If you need any help with anything, let us know pertaining to this subject. I wanted to give a shout out to former council member Teresa Geringer for all of her service. And she was involved not only in what we do, but also the school sides of it. And so I'm very happy that Susan and Wei Tai are gonna be involved with us, and I know you're gonna go over the assignments very shortly. I also want to shout out to Patrick and Matt Lutrup, who has done a lot of work in different presentations and meetings and a lot of the grinding work around the Pleasant Hill, Olympic Boulevard, roundabout changes. It's been a lot of work, and Matt's done a really great job on that. Also want to count out, shout out Stella, who was also involved with the LRSP. You know, that was a big project. And I'm very excited for Bart's leadership this year. It's gonna be great. And so I'm very, very happy for that. One overall comment I had was, one of the things we've wrestled with has been transparency. And we've, through the different projects, I think what comes up over and over again is how people keep asking for more transparency, like, for example, around the funding that Bart mentioned. We're trying to make it more public in a process that the public will have time to respond to things and get involved early on. And so it's difficult, because sometimes opportunities pop up and you have to jump on them. And that's why we put together a list of potential funding opportunities. But I just wanted to say to all the members of the public that are listening, we really appreciate all of the public input. We learned so much from calls and also from emails from the public, you know, that really constantly amazes me how involved the public are and how much great information they have got and great ideas. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner DiGiorgio. Any else? If not, then I will ask my fellow council members if there are any questions or comments.
I do. Oh, my gosh, you guys. You get, I mean, the Youth Commission did a lot, but you guys have been hitting far above your weight for the past couple of years. And I just want to thank each and every one of you. I mean, even compared in the day, you know, planning commissioners get slammed. Right now, it's not. It's you guys. You guys are absolutely carrying the heavy lifting in our city and on big, visible things that are so important to the public. And so I just wanted to somehow express my appreciation for all of you and the jobs you're doing. I hope you guys all stay, because you're doing a terrific job. And Patrick is, I'm sure, very happy that you're there, helping him do all the things that he's doing, and Matt too. So I just want to thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Candell. Councilmember McCormick.
Yeah, I will. Thank you very much, Carl. And it's amazing what you're doing. I mean, I think of, you know, planning commissions, community commission, I mean, all the different, you know, commissions, people, our citizens hit occasionally, you know, if they happen to have something pressing. But everybody in Lafayette is benefiting from the work you do. So I just have to, I want to echo our appreciation for it. I did have a question, though. I was interested. I know, it looks like the traffic calming and the local road safety program, everything you did. Now, so traffic calming was a pretty big difference. Right now, people can do a submission for calming improvements as well as traffic. I'm curious how the uptick has been. Have you gotten, have we gotten input from the public on additional calming requests? And how is that going? Now, it looks like we separate those from kind of the more traditional traffic.
I'm gonna let Patrick answer that.
I haven't received any direct comments from, hi, I'm the staff liaison.
Hey, Patrick.
Transfer, Patrick Goliere. I haven't received any direct comments about the update, but I do get quite a bit of calls about how do I get traffic calming on my street. I described the guidebook. I point them to the new guidebook, and I think that there's an appreciation that it's made simpler and easier to understand. It's now an annual process. It's much more efficient. And there's a greater understanding of the criteria that are being used to evaluate all the applications that I receive.
Thank you.
All right. Well, on behalf of all myself, I also echo the words of my fellow council members. You guys are doing an incredible amount of work. Each bullet point there was not just like some small thing. They were actually quite big, chunky things. And I'd say, just as a big picture of the amount of progress you've made, some of those are quite substantial items. And in terms of transparency, I think, I do feel that you are, the public is giving you feedback. You are listening to that feedback and making adjustments. I mean, everybody always wishes it was faster or better, but I think you are definitely listening and within the confines of you being all volunteer and using volunteer time to power this. This is really very good forward progress. Also, the fact that we have Patrick as a staffer and putting a lot more effort to revising the guidebooks, and those are huge amounts of detailed work and improving processes. These are, this is a lot of progress that we've made that is a little bit invisible to the public. But I think just when you list it like that, I was just thinking, wow, that's just tremendous amount of deliverables, really, for a mostly volunteer group and just, you know, one staffer, or I think Patrick probably has more stuff on his plate too. So congratulations to all you. Keep up the good work. Do more if you can, and let us know what type of help you need. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a speaker slip.
Oh.
I have Dawn Ames in our virtual audience.
Okay, please invite Ms. Ames to join us by Zoom.
Good evening. Dawn Ames here, and I just wanted to congratulate John McCormick for joining the council. And I understand that he's been quite active in the community as well as the Chamber of Commerce. I understand that the Chamber of Commerce is supposed to represent, or does represent, all of the businesses in the city. And I just wanted to make sure that the outreach is done to the small businesses that may or may not be part of the chamber, and especially in regards to the Mount Diablo Boulevard Corridor Plan, which I'm not too familiar with. And if somebody could explain what that plan, if it's in existence now, or it's going to be developed or changed, how that is going to work as far as development and meetings, et cetera.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Would the commission like to provide any further detail?
The, that project has not yet been introduced to the commission, so we're not really familiar with it yet. But my understanding of it is that it's going to be to improve multimodal transit throughout the length of Mount Diablo Boulevard. So that means making it easier for people to walk, to bike, in addition to maintaining adequate traffic flow on Mount Diablo Boulevard. So once we receive that, the commission will be able to get into it and hopefully do good work for the community.
Thank you for the question, and thank you for the answer.
Our next speaker is Cheryl McDonald.
All right, welcome, Ms. McDonald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. My congratulations, John McCormick. Welcome to the council world. Look forward to be involved with you in the future as a chamber liaison, and this is a council member. Thank you. I'm glad Dawn Ames brought up her points. I was gonna come up with something similar to that, so I'm glad she did. If you could somehow get it maybe in a Vista or some public correspondence about the Mount Diablo Corridor Plan. I think it's something that we've heard a lot about, but we don't understand. We're getting a little bit more insight now. But it's kind of a vague notion. Is it gonna affect businesses, parking? How do we get involved? How do we get involved? And then in regards to that, one of the lists on the slide was the downtown parking plan, planning study. And way back in the day, we actually, when Sarah Allen was new, we actually had a public parking committee, I think it was. And there were a lot of us that were really involved in that. And I wondered if that was going to be a subcommittee that would maybe come back again so that we could be, the public could be involved in a, before things are decided kind of way in front of the council, like, like it was done before. That would be interesting. Chair Carr, thank you so much for bringing up Glenn Haden and her 50 years. I've been around here for a long time, and I didn't even know it was that long that you've been in service. So thank you for recognizing that. And thank you, those are my thoughts and my questions. So just how do we find out more about the Mount Diablo Corridor Plan? Thank you.
Thank you so much for the comment and joining us. Any other?
Our next speaker is David Clark.
All right, Mr. Clark, welcome.
David, you need to unmute yourself. David, I don't know if you're having trouble tonight as a Zoom attendee, but I'm allowing you to speak if you can unmute yourself. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Quoc, I'm not having any luck.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Clark, that you're not able to join us for technical reasons, but we welcome your comments in the future. Are there any other hands raised?
No additional speakers at this time.
Okay, with that, then, I will thank this, the Transcirt Commission for being here and giving a very thorough report and for all of your services and volunteer work over the past year, and wish you all the best in 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to item number 12A, the consent calendar. And there are three items on the consent calendar, 12A, 12B, and 12C. Is there anybody that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Vice Mayor Quoc, we have a request to remove item 12A2. We have a speaker on that item and item 12B.
Okay, let's pull item 12A2 and item 12B. And if there are no further suggestions, any any members of the public who have submitted requests? If not, then may I have a motion to pass, to may I have a motion for 12A1 and 12C?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Item 12A1, 12C are passed, and 12A2 and 12B are moved to agenda item 16. There are no items of business for item 13, 14, and 15, so we will move now to item 16, those items we removed from the consent calendar, the first one being item 12A2.
Speaker Jean Fulmer.
Okay. Jean Fulmer is present in the hall, and we welcome you to speak.
I know, I'm making up for lost time with the council. So, you know, transparency is always a theme, and, you know, Kristen referenced it, and it, you know, was just referenced with circulation. And I was reading through the the minutes, and I, you know, minutes never tell the full story. And in this case, I feel they especially don't tell the full story. News is always, you know, news is always what they tell you, and usually the most interesting part of the news is what's not reported. You know, during that appointment process meeting, I was one of six or seven members of the public that was there. And from six to seven, the city council had charged itself with developing questions to ask the candidates as well as establishing a process for selecting a candidate during deliberation. And, you know, the the process was was punted till later. They figured they'd kind of handle it, you know, as deliberations came up. So we listened to all the candidates, really great interviews, lots of really good ideas that hopefully you'll jump on during the rest of your tenures. And, you know, Mayor Gina asked each of the city council members for their top two or three candidates. There were three applicants that got multiple votes, John, Stella, and Glenn. And there was a second meeting that had been scheduled for that Wednesday that the candidates had been notified of. You know, the deliberations went on, then there was a sudden pivot, and it was decided to appoint that night instead of moving to a second interview. And I'd like to ask the council to please codify a process for appointment. You know, you are three of the five most important members of the city, I would say. You have been elected or appointed to represent the interests of all of the citizens, and I think that all of the applicants and all of the community members do deserve more than 30 minutes to appoint someone to one of the five most important. And, I mean, you're in charge of so much, you know, whether it's banning leaf blowers or it's, you know, adding additional police. I mean, these are, these are really, really important things that come before you, and I would like to see a process. And and just, you know, a policy can be changed, but at least give the next group of council members something to start with, please. And when you have seven or nine applicants at 30 minutes, everybody's tired by the end, right? Nobody does their best thinking at 11 o'clock P. M. And, you know, John, I have no doubt you're going to be absolutely successful, and I meant that earlier when I said welcome to the council, but I would like you to be part of the process because, you know, this is going to happen in the future. And minutes in other areas are, you know, lacking, whether it's the city schools committee or the E T F. And, you know, hopefully that can be resolved because members of the public can't attend every meeting to put the pieces of the puzzle together. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us and for your comments tonight. We, we will not be able to respond to that in this session, but I appreciate them anyways.
Our next speaker is in our virtual audience.
Yes.
Lauren Herpik.
Okay. Ms. Herpik, on item 12A2.
Hi, council. Along with Jean, I was also one of the seven members of the public to be present for the city council appointment interviews. And I'd like to also share my deep concern that the attached minutes are the only official reflection of this most recent appointment process. Unfortunately, it sounds the audio recording taken that night was deemed too poor in quality, probably just like my voice right now. That'll be not available to this on the city's website. Now, I've been debating how deep I wanted to go and sharing my concern tonight about not only these three minutes, but also the entire process or lack thereof. You would think we, as a city, would have had a process codified by now, as we've had three appointments in just four and a half years. Needless to say, the serenity prayer has been on my mind in and out of naps today. So I'll just share that I fear this is a situation like, that situations like this that's contributing to the lack of trust in our government at every level. I'm really glad transparency has been a theme tonight. I want to see Lafayette as a city that makes things happen, but I'm personally tired of the infighting anytime we've tried to get things done. Just in my 10 years living here, we've had Measure C in 2016, Measure L in 2018, Lee Creekside Park in my neighborhood. And I'm learning and talking to my neighbors and those who have been involved that much of why our city's budget has been spent on litigation and court fees is because there's a lack of trust and transparency. So please, let's just do ourselves a favor by dotting the i's and crossing the t's. It's truly making citizens question the city's leadership. So codify the process and also have a better backup system in having meeting minutes. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Herpik.
And my last speaker is Cheryl McDonald.
Welcome, Ms. McDonald.
Hi. I wanted to come down to that meeting that night and was unable to. And so my question for transparency is, why was that, why was this meeting not recorded but available on Zoom so that we could attend and not necessarily ask questions, but just be part of the process for those with disabilities or other inconveniences that people have? So I'm wondering why, as you proceed possibly with your discussions on reform, why something like this could not be recorded but available on Zoom so we could watch from home? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I have no additional speakers.
There are no others for 12, okay, so that was for 12A. As to item, so shall we vote? Why don't we vote on item 12A2 first, and then we'll go to item 12B? Are there any comments or questions from council members on 12A2? If not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 29, 2024 special meeting?
Yes, some moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the minutes are approved unanimously. We'll move to item 12B, which is the Mount Diablo Court Signal and Intersection Improvement Project, the final acceptance of construction project number 014-9723. There were some email comments on this item that asked for some clarification on the budget expenditures, and so I'd like to invite City Manager Shavatsa to explain what the questions were in general and then provide some clarification for the public.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Quoc. We did receive emails asking about the Mount Diablo Signal Project and particularly the use of funds from the Tree in Lou fee. The question was, are we using the monies that P G N E had given us as part of the Community Pipeline Safety Initiative, which took place about five years ago? The response is no. The monies that were used, and they were budgeted as part of the original project along with developers' contributions, was monies from the City's Tree in Lou Fee Fund. And that is a fund that when an applicant or property owner cannot provide mitigation trees if they plan to remove a tree, they don't have the room to provide mitigation trees on site, the city allows them to contribute to an in-lou fund. Those funds, the municipal code and the Tree Protection Ordinance says, can be used for planting of vegetation in the public right-of-way and also for education, tree education. So that's the fund from which this money was secured, and it was part of the initial budget.
Thank you very much for the explanation. Do any council members have any questions or comments on the?
No.
Nope. Okay, are there any public comments or questions on item 12B?
You have a speaker, Don Ames in our virtual audience.
All right, welcome, Ms. Ames.
Hi, thank you again. My understanding, I don't understand where the $475,000 that were called the Tree in Lou Funds that the former city manager had negotiated with P G N E, where that money was. My understanding was that it went into a lawsuit or something and that it could not be touched for a while. So then, all of a sudden, I see it, Tree in Lou Funds, and now it's being said that it is a different type of fund that the developers can put into. So which is it? And is it legally able to be used for, other than the enhancement of the East End? Or it's just specific to that project, probably? And, and then the assessment district voting requirements for improvements to the district for the use of this particular, you know, what my understanding was, was the $475,000 in Lou, Tree in Lou Funds.
Okay, thank you very much. I will ask our city manager to provide a response.
Certainly, thank you, Ms. Ames. The fund is the City's Tree in Lou Fund. It does not have anything to do with the mitigation funds that P G N E gave the city a few years ago. The Tree in Lou Fund has been used by the city engineering department and public works to, for landscaping within the public right-of-way and for, as part of capital improvement projects. It's a good source of funding. When we have a C I P project and we need to make it aesthetically pleasing, we use the Tree in Lou Fees to pay for the landscaping, and that is what happened here.
Okay, thank you very much. And there was a second question. Where about the P G N E settlement fund? Is there a process?
It is, we do have it. It is in a restricted account, and we are not using it. I will confirm with the city attorney that it is, has been used for litigation.
It's been used for litigation associated with the P G N E lawsuit.
But we do not use it for city purposes or to plant trees within the city. It is a restricted fund.
Thank you for the explanation. Any questions from council on item 12B? And if there are no more, are there any more public questions or comments if, on 12B?
It looks like I have Cheryl McDonald. Go ahead, Cheryl.
I'm trying to understand all of it. Is the money that in the in Lou fee, is it supposed to go throughout the the three districts, east, west, and core? Or is it, how is it distributed? Thank you.
Be happy to answer that. The Tree Protection Ordinance was updated around 2010 or 2014, and the Tree Mitigation Fund, In-Lou Fund, was created. It is not restricted to the downtown. It is a citywide fund that can be used anywhere to, for landscaping and for educational purposes. So there's a part of the code that specifies where these funds can be used.
Thank you very much. City clerk, are there any further members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
No additional speakers.
Okay, we'll close the public comment, and then do I have a motion on 12B?
I, can I, can I say that we will follow the recommendation by staff? I have to do the whole, say the whole thing. Okay, so recommendation, allocate approximately $121,220 from the Capital Improvement Fund, 14 balance to cover the project deficit. Two, we want to accept the Mount Diablo Boulevard at Mount Diablo Court Intersection Improvements as complete and authorized staff to file a notice of completion.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion is unanimous and approved. Let's move on to item 17, which is council and commission reports. Council members report on activities and consideration matters. A council member wishes to initiate for placement on a future agenda.
Thank you very much. Other than, I want to thank, thank everybody for allowing me to participate. Very excited for the year coming up ahead. I do not have anything to report as far as future council business yet. I plan to in the future. Thank you.
You can also use this time to report on activities. Well, I guess there was a Business Person of the Year event, and maybe.
Probably worthwhile. I'd be happy to to share that. This was a, an annual event that is, you know, sponsored by the the chamber with active participation from the city. We had Mayor Dawson give her first day of the city address, which was very good. She said the city is strong. I think we can all agree with that. And she gave a list of the accomplishments and some of the challenges ahead for us. So that was quite good. And we were, we were able to celebrate Holly, Holly's homegrown, as, and her amazing story and her amazing family. And that was, that was very inspirational, and that was very, very exciting to be part of, and yet one reason to be proud for being in Lafayette. So that was, that was a good, good kickoff of, for the year, and we're all looking forward to Citizen of the Year as our next major kind of joint event.
Right, and I, there were several council members in attendance, Councilmember Candell and myself and the mayor, as you well as yourself. So we were well represented by the city and the city manager and staff were also in attendance. So very thankful for the chamber for organizing this wonderful event. Any other? Yep, go. for the chamber for organizing this wonderful event. Any other, yep, go ahead.
Um, so one of the things that I did reach out to staff to help with was that um, the city of Newport Beach reached out because they, they wanted to get a statewide audit of the sober living facilities, and so I didn't know if I had to bring that up here to get you guys help, but the city staff gave back wonderful information in like a day, and so I just want to thank staff for helping, helping other cities like that, it's just so, I was, I was happy to help, be able to help them out in, in what they're doing. Um, next, um, Jean brought it up, the NICSIL messages, if we could somehow bring that back.
Thank you. I am working with Kathy and Chief Aldred uh, to formalize the NICSIL policy, and uh, we should have that within a month to bring it to the council.
Perfect, thank you. Um, the housing element, yeah, I do, if, even if we bring it back, not the whole element, obviously no changes, but if we could get at least some sort of timeline, or some sort of, and we can discuss maybe how we want to help this effort, you know, bring lots of options, get this thing through the goalposts. Um, and then I, taking our wonderful comments, a codify process for appointments, is, would that be something that's in our, could be part of our work plan this year, or is that next year?
We have an adopted resolution that already exists.
Right.
That caught, that has a process for vac, filling the vacancies, so I don't know if they, there's a desire to amend that resolution, but there already is an existing.
Right, because I remember we, we did modify it, I, I've remembered that, um, and I think, so maybe, can you send that out to us again? We, we all read, read it, but?
It, it does exist, I'm happy to send it out, but even for the public, it's in our first meeting in January packet. Um, I'm trying to pull the exact date, but it exists on our website, on our website, under the January 8th City Council Meeting, when we discussed um, filling the vacancy at the January 8th Council Meeting, the resolution, which has the appointment process, is in that agenda item.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Council Member Candell. Um, I, I have no further comments or reports, so with that, we'll close this agenda item 17, and move on to agenda item 18, which is written communications. Item 18A is an email from Gail Israel, the Chief of Staff for Supervisor Candace Anderson, requesting a proclamation in honor of Red Cross Month for March 2024. That proclamation is in our packets, and so I welcome any questions from council. No questions from council, I welcome uh, questions from the public, public comments on this item.
I do have a speaker slip, Sarah Lind.
Welcome Sarah Lind.
Sit down, can you hear me? Oh, great, thank you. Um, just real quick, John, congrats. I've worked with you in renting trumpets, and I've listened to you present to the chamber, and now get to watch you take part in this process, so thank you for your service, but you do have a natural inclination to be helpful, and so it's gonna be nice to see where this goes. Um, and I was interested, it was interesting to watch the evening kind of play on, because I did notice that there was some back and forth between Chris and Connolly in a public comment, and the city manager and some call-ins, and so I, again, consistency, because there was somebody who was declined for the comment based on an agenda item with the city manager's update, because it was her update, part of her update. So um, I don't know, just my observation, but uh, just real quick regarding the, the proclamation to honor Red Cross Month, um, I wanted to bring your attention to Representative Tom Tiffany's um, exposure today, he's out of Wisconsin, and he exposed the Red Cross for enabling illegal immigration across our southern border, and as you all know, fentanyl has come through our southern border in massive quantities, and there are over 100,000 fentanyl deaths happening um, just in the last year, and we all see it in San Francisco when we go there, so you can't deny what's happening. I'd ask that you really reconsider maybe declaring March Red Cross Awareness Month, because it is proven that they're aiding and abetting illegal immigration, which is illegal. We have a process. Um, and NGOs like the Red Cross is assisting in that, and it's being, it's being exposed, so please reconsider. That's all, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other public comments on this item?
No additional speakers at this time, Vice Mayor Kwak.
Okay, are there comments from fellow council members? Do I have a motion?
Actually, I, I would like to, I'll just make a brief mention, sorry, process is new to me. Um, I appreciate the comments uh, about Red Cross. Um, I will say um, every organization has got some issues. Personally, I am, I'm involved very deeply with the Red Cross, uh, doing platelet donations uh, regularly, and so on, and so they do good work. I share those concerns that you had, but um, the, the work that is done is uh, is impressive, and um, and uh, certainly parts of it are worthy of admiration.
Thank you for the comments, uh, Council Member McCormick.
So, um, I, I'll make, go ahead and make, make the motion to um, approve the proclamation in honor of Red Cross Month for March of this year.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Let's go to item 18B, it's an email from Mariella Sandig, Contra Costa County Meds Coalition Coordinator, the Bay Area Community Resources, Inc., requests a proclamation recognizing March 2024 as Prescription Drug Abuse Awareness Month. Any questions from council? Do we have any public comment on item 18B?
No public comment.
Okay, with that, um, do I have a motion?
I'll, I'll move to approve proclamation recognizing March uh, 2024 as Prescription Drug Abuse Awareness Month.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. And item C now is a request from Jay Lifson, the Rotary Club of Lafayette, for upcoming events in 2024. The first, I, we'll, we'll um, take these items together. Uh, item one is to request permission to use Lafayette Plaza for the annual candy scramble to include closure of Plaza Way and a portion of Golden Gateway with no parking area on Saturday, March 30th, from 9:30 AM to 10:45 AM. Street closures and no parking areas are described in Resolution 2024-08, Exhibit A, and item two is to request a change to the Keep On Truckin' event scheduled for Saturday, April 27th, for street closures and no parking areas described in Resolution 2024-08, Exhibit B. Any questions or comments from council?
No.
Any uh, public comment on this item?
No public comments on this item, Vice Mayor Kwak.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I move that we um, grant all of the requests in this agenda item.
All right.
And I second.
We have a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, so we, we pass unanimously, and then going to our last item 18D, it's a letter from Tim Mule, the Chief Assistant County Administrator, requesting a letter of support from the city of Lafayette for federal grant funding for Contra Costa County's Head Start, an early Head Start program that provides countywide Head Start services throughout Contra Costa County. The re, uh, request is to authorize the mayor to sign and send the letter of support. Any questions or comments from council? If not, is there any public comment?
No public comment.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion that we authorize the mayor to sign and send the letter of support.
And I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. A motion passes unanimously. All right, with that, we come to adjournments. Thank you, everybody, for, for, for being here, and good night.